Sir, the Betterment of the town of Cobalt and his people, I call this meeting to an end. Six thirty? Disclosure of junior interests and general nature thereof. Three deputations and delegations, Mike De Silva, Development at Five Dunning Drive. Mike, if you'd like to come up and take a chair here. How are you doing?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you for giving me your time.
Absolutely.
So what we have, what we're thinking of is we're originally from the Toronto. And right now, we're in the middle of finishing up the school in Lisker, as you all probably know. We had a few issues there, we got these off, and running away, it's looking good. And hopefully, we should be done by May. That's the school in Lisker. This one here, which is the one that we're talking about now, we would like to do something similar, let's say that that's carpentry. We're always open for suggestions and ideas, obviously. We're looking there at that double-digit number in the millions, of course. What we'd like to do, I remember saying that we can go approximately, that's the first, possibly fifty, sixty homes, affordable homes. So we're looking at approximately thirty-three hundred square feet per house. At the house, that's more than land. So we're looking at thirty-three feet frontage, probably approximately five feet down. So as we all know, there's approximately five acres there. So with the roads and with some greenery, the town is an awesome town. We've been looking at this town now for the last ten years. And that was the reason why we bought that school. Originally, we thought of old age seniors residents, but that number didn't work for us. So we thought, this town, it needs enough of this. More of this, we spent, no chance. Because it is a great town, it used to be a rich town, from what we understand. And it's a gorgeous town. The only thing, but we see, and I'm just giving my opinion, so don't shoot me for it. We feel that because it's a great town, it's got great potential. There's a lot of homes that, of course, they do a bit of uplifting and so forth. But we feel, this is just our, what we've discussed, because I do have associates. One of them should be here. I guess it's late, there's a couple of things as well. We feel that if we do something like this, we're not banking on minds, because minds are, yes, no, yes, no. We're banking on, hopefully, giving this town a lift, because the architecture in this town is phenomenal. But nobody's making a move, as far as owners are, certainly not many are making a move. It's like a cheater target. So we thought if we did something like this, it would make the whole town, maybe, react again, and be a town. I see, we see, or Cobalt, seems to be moving a little bit, as far as renovations are concerned and so forth. Halliburay, we see the same thing, new Lisker, which is really making a move. The only one that's really not is this one here. Again, I don't, I hope nobody takes it as disrespectful. It's just our opinion, our opinion, that's what we're doing this way. My folks have been here a lot longer than I have. I worked with you thirteen years, and I love, I love it up here. And a lot of my friends have bought, associates have bought a lot of properties up here, including Cobalt. A lot of Cobalt are very whispery. Just last year, we bought twenty-two properties here. So that, that tells us something. We're investing money, but we think it's, nothing's going to give it, except that tax is the only one that. But we think it'll really give this town enough. That'd be at the bottom of the hill there, we thought, wow. This was, we think it would really make a move and be affordable, because we do properties, quite a bit in that way. Some of them we do, went to, give people their fraternity. We think we can do the same thing here. But we need to rest, obviously, because once we start spending money, other potential, covering the nose, we have done, as some of you may know, we've done, I think it was 2018, we did a sewer, look, there's always, really important, we did to see if it would take forty-four units at that time. And it was fine, water consumption was fine. So we had that company called private eye, and they did that. So, okay, come on in, come on in. That is for you to better. I have associates.
Sorry, can you, can you?
I'm 2018. M B E H A, M E H T A. Oh, sorry, that's okay.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. Sorry, what, your name?
Anna. Okay, so that's last name is Karol, K A R W A L.
Thank you.
So many different names. Yes, my associates are powerful, using it. That's fine. Let me just say this, when I first came here, I used to hear a lot of things, and I don't mind saying it for my friends, that a lot of students come in, they're picking over this and that, but you know what, at the end of the day, they do work nine hours, they work fourteen, eighteen hours a day. And right now, it's, as you possibly know, Waystone, is, I saw the year, the year change. So this is why I want to keep busy. But it is hard to find staff nowadays, it's really hard to find staff. So, yes, a lot of Indian people are coming up there. And they work nine hours. And I'm not discriminating against our race, because I am Canadian, but discrimination is this. But the generation today is a different generation, our generation. So, yeah, we would, if town agrees, council agrees there, and the lengths we're presenting, and it will be awesome, then we can move forward. But the first step would be to get your blessing. And we can go over thirty-three feet frontage. Because if we do, it cuts us back. And there's no hidden in the window, whatever it is to make a dollar. Yes, we'd like to make the town again, maybe not like it was back in the twenties, but at least make it lively again. Give it a face, give it lively, make things happen here. You know, it's a shame that this town, and it's none of your fault, of course. But it is a shame when we look at it, you see all the architecture here. It can be all renovated, fixed, and make it a town again. You know, of course, we'd like to see it, but what else than this is make it up? Cars don't run without gas, we don't run without money. We have the money to make things happen. We can't go over thirty-three feet, as I was saying, because thirty-three feet frontage, any more than that, would not be feasible to us. And at the same time, it wouldn't make it affordable to a buyer. The houses itself, we're looking at anywhere from eight hundred to eleven hundred. Excellent, so eight hundred square feet to eleven hundred makes it sort of affordable to a lot of first buyers especially. And there, we don't show branch, but each house will have a branch, a single branch. We may, we're thinking of, under eleven hundred square feet, we're thinking of raising it to a story and a half. That would be sort of like an expanse. That would just fasten the stuff we did for the town. This is really what we're hoping is that we can get here, to town, we'll work with this, and give us the blessing, because we have tore it down, and missed cleaning it up, which is another thing that I'd like to talk about. We didn't have enough money on the steel to get rid of the garbage. We got rid of some of it, but there wasn't enough funding for that. And I was hoping that the town would maybe work a little bit with this, and we can finish cleaning it up, and at least have a little bit of a break on the dumping of garbage. So we can get rid of that, which, because we are afraid of kids going there and get hurt. Because of our nails, sharp edges there. If the town could only reconsider, maybe living it a little bit on the dump in peace. Get rid of that. We're working with Angie, cycling, her name is cycling. We're, she's been awesome with this, she really has. So she asked me to mention this to you guys. So don't shoot the rest of you, we're just asking for a little bit of help. And sure, you guys may want to think about it, discuss it, I understand. Steve has all my, all my contact information. He's been really positive. So has the five of us.
Pete Gilbuk.
Pete Gilbuk, Pete. He's been awesome as well.
Yeah.
I did what you suggested, not to build it down. That should have done that one down. I really should have. But you know, if one of those things, we get caught up with this, with that, you know about us. So, so I hope you guys like our project. I understand that the town of, yeah, Cobalt, Halliburay, they like sixty-six, frontage. I think it's a variance, maybe down to thirty-three feet. You know, you want the town to grow, you know, you don't need to access it. Everybody needs a little bit of money, so that's just more taxes for the town. And I think thirty-three feet is, is, I'm providing from the, their brothers, he's got some properties there. They look pretty good. I think you guys know which ones are top.
Which one do you, I don't know, I'm not familiar with which ones.
It's all in Lisker. They're on the right-hand side.
Other ones right at the lake?
Yes.
Remar, the corner, whatever?
Correct.
Good. So they're like bungalows or something, aren't they?
Right. Yeah. And they're, they're semis, it's a similar, similar idea. As we really like the project, because they, they haven't helped a lot, thirty-three feet frontage. So we thought, well, maybe the town here may understand, it's, we'll pick it up, it'll take a couple of years, no question about that. It won't take a couple of years. Oh, and, sorry. Go ahead.
Who was, who was planning on doing the development, who's building it? Okay, somebody from here or a company?
We always try to get people from here.
You have a company from Toronto that comes up that you work with, who does that?
Okay, we do, but out of respect, we, we're strong on respect, we're very strong on that.
It's hard to get people up here that are busy.
Okay, okay, and the difference is the prices for carpenters here versus the prices down there. Even though we have the lodging, we have a bit of food, but we've been lodging. It still comes to the twenty-five percent cheaper. Because everybody here is busy. It's, they are small towns, there's not very many, and why would they want to come work for us for a budget like that, for forty dollars an hour, if we get sixty-five, seventy, doing smaller projects? You didn't get up.
Before, before I take more questions, I think, is it Reheat?
Yes.
Reheat had someone say that.
No, I was just saying that this lady had a question.
We are going to use local trade people as much as possible. Now that, you know, we want to bring business to town as well, so we do try that right through the gank of, you know, if we can get someone local, it's probably much better for us. We can, oh, we have to find the lodging, we have to get, you know. And so they, they also face a lot of issues. So, you know, we always try someone from here, like, you know. I would bring it, so please, you go ahead, I think you're asking.
I'm, you've obviously looked at the, your lots, like an air photo, and I know it costs money to design, but I think we need to have more information, even if it's hand-drawn. Where you think the layout of those lots is going to be? With a thirty-three-foot frontage, I mean, you almost have to have a duplex. Just to have the fire rating and spacing between homes, and to have space if you're going to put a garage and access. I'd like to see a hand-drawn, so inexpensive, more developed design of what you're thinking, because this isn't showing duplexes, I think a duplex makes more sense, it's also and affordable, like to know more of a definition of what you think affordable is. Are you willing to sell some of the lots and let people develop them themselves? Or do you plan to actually do all the building and developing, so that they are uniform? So those are my questions. They don't all have to be answered now, but I think we need more discussion on this.
And I totally agree, and I feel that these questions are going to be about. First thing is, is we didn't want to get into spending more, more money, to fill what you're saying. Your first question is, we have to have a survey, exactly what the property is. We don't want to buy any more property out there, unless we have to. But we're hoping the survey occurs to the young, and then we know exactly where it's at. As for selling just the lots, no, we wouldn't be interested in that. The reason being, because you could have twenty or thirty homes that fit into that. We don't want to cause a post community, because it won't be, it's not going to be, you can throw the whole project off. You know, it's, you know, it's like having a car, and then you've got, you've got all these cars, you've got a Big Mac truck, parking driveway, you know, it'll stand right up. So we thought, to make the whole thing look nice, we'd like to do the whole project, as opposed to selling lots. Because it just, we found in the past that it doesn't work. Everybody has different ideas, we all have different ideas. So, so one right here, and so one there. Then it doesn't make it feasible for us. It's for us to do the whole thing, it's a lot cheaper than just so many. As far as the fire, as far as the fire rating is concerned, yes, we'd like to do two semis, two semis, or three semis. And of course, the fire rating, that's what we're not saying. And of course, we're not saying it has to be there, and that's not a big crisis. We don't really bend into our numbers. So we know roughly what each one is going to cost, just including the road, because we have to go, obviously.
So when you, at the end of the day, when you have these all built, what do you think an affordable house is? What kind of a price do you imagine estimated will be on one of these houses?
On today's market?
If I wanted to buy one, what would that cost?
Well, today's.
I guess you can't, you've got to forecast three years from now or four years.
Yeah, we don't know what the market is.
What's your ideal price perhaps? You must have that word.
If it was finished today, then we'd figure that we'd sell for under two hundred thousand, on today's market. Now, two years from today, your guess is this one. Yeah, but I thought, and there's a lot of people coming from Toronto up here, as we all know. I'm one of them.
And they're used to small places.
Well, they're selling their homes in Toronto, but they have two million dollars. And rightfully so, they're in their forties, forty-five, fifteen, they're saying, why do I have to work anymore? There's wealth, everybody else, two, three hundred thousand, rest to rest. And I'm living a beautiful, small town, beautiful town, you've got beautiful lake, basically, beautiful lake. I'm not a fisherman, I'm not a hunter, so I don't do any of that, but a lot of people do. And even from Toronto, that is part of my life. So a lot of people come here, and, and lawyers, friends of ours. It's amazing, but today, a lot of people working from home, because it's COVID thing, a lot of people learn to work from home now. They need to see a client downtown, they rent a room, or a, a meeting room in an hotel, and they meet in a meeting room in our town. Like, at the end of the day, they've got to pay for this client anyway, so the lawyers don't care.
Brad, you have any questions?
Yeah, um, first I'll say, I lived in very similar type of development, quite comfortably in Ottawa for many years. Size-wise, it was great. My question is, are you thinking of this being a condominium in the end? Or outright each property sale, or rent on?
Good question. Outright to.
Pardon?
Outright to. Yeah, freehold.
Freehold, okay, yeah, yeah, ours was condominium. Both are great, yeah, but that sizing, that density, you know, the thirty-three-foot frontage and everything, we were very comfortable. So the houses were very comfortable, and for the majority of people that bought them, they were starter homes.
I'm looking at about thirty, maybe twenty-eight, so.
We won't say what we paid, because that was back in the seventies.
I had a house in, in Toronto, it's wonderful, it's still there, it's sold now, sold. But the frontage was nineteen feet, the deck was eighty feet. So, and it was fine.
Yeah.
I lived there okay, I raised three, they raised mine too, but we were family, we lived okay. But here, I understand. There's a lot of land here, a lot of land. I live at thirty-three feet, it's comfortable. But yes, if we have a notion, that, that council and mayor is on board, we don't mind spending money with the survey.
Angela.
Angela.
But you do have the approximate size, and if you, you've already done the calculation, it doesn't have to be absolutely exact, you, there are air photos that'll give you the approximate. That would be enough for you to show, oh, we can fit six there, most likely.
We'd like to do a, or the two, yeah. Yeah. Something like that. And I think everybody would be maybe, I don't think we're living, I'm not discriminating, people, so. But you know, like I said, I had a house that was nineteen feet frontage, I didn't even know my neighbor. I don't find that here completely, they're made. What did your neighbor have to tell you, your neighbor ten houses down, everybody knows it here. They'll be there to say good morning, they'll say hi. Nice one. I'm not discriminating, it is what it is, better car, it's paid, it's paid. So, yeah, we tune it, we thought, we'd be on both sides, just have the road in the middle. That was, I'm looking for suggestions. Any suggestion helps everybody.
Jim, do you have any questions?
I just envisioning all this, I like, I like the idea, like this is something like, as long as it's all proper means to check out things to do so with that spot. Testing, I like, I like the idea.
You know, based on research, that most of the houses, which here, Cobalt, Halliburay, that's what here, all the land does. That's what here, you are not.
Well, if they find the little, I mean, I know they might not just like.
No, these will not have a base. No, no base. The reason being, because they people, who has the rights to any mineral, so because of that, that's going to come and stay.
Can I keep talking? Yeah, it's just that we need housing, I mean, there's the big factory, electric battery, it's expanding on that place, they need workers to work there. They can't come here, they're homeless, it's not good, right? We took, definitely thousands.
We can lose state here.
Doug, do you have a question?
Just a couple of thoughts and a question. One, I was, the question would be, you're looking for help on removing some of the leftover building materials on the lot. It's predominantly what, wood, brick, glass, that kind of thing?
Yes, all three, you're right, you're right, all three.
Okay, and how much of a help would you be looking for to get that done? Are you asking us to take it away for you, or meet you halfway, or?
No, we're not asking for, we're like, we understand everything costs money. But if the town would, with fifty-fifty. If the town would help with fifty-fifty. That would be a big help. Because just to start with that. Level everything and make everything what it was supposed to be, eleven, twelve million dollars. That's just a start. So. Every little bit help, every little bit of help. Helps. Because. Sure, we. Can build that. Say, no, we want three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, no, it doesn't work. Those just sit there for a thousand breakfasts. So if we keep our costs down. Then we can sell them off quicker. And you were saying. There is a house insurance here. I can't move apartments today in Coburg, Calgary. I have one basement apartment, twelve hundred dollars. Hundred dollars, because it's basic. That's what it is. When I rent a house. Eight hundred square foot house that I've seen in Manhattan. And they rented it for twenty-four, twenty-six hundred dollars a month, bless you. So it's getting pretty tough up here. And that's going to. Unless you own property. That'd be pretty tough to do. So that's why we thought. People can own a house cheaper than they can pay rent.
Angela, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I think it will be important to consult with our public works and our town manager about, because I know that there are some essential water lines that go through there. We have some sewer upgrading plans that are coming up, so just to understand how that fits in. I know you did some water. Like studies, but I think that there needs to be more with this use and planning in mind because I think there are going to be parts of that lot you're not going to be able to build on. Because the town needs to be able to access those lines in the future. So it'll be important to know what, what you're limited to on that lot as far as construction and that will have to get information from public works on that.
You're right. So far from what we've seen. From the view of that we've seen from the. Work there. Search around the water. So far it looks good, but anything can, can happen. You're right. We're not going to just jump in and then find out that there's a problem here, a problem there. Because that's something that we're looking to do tomorrow. Our first step was to propose the town. The council and the mayor, so forth. This was our first step. We wanted to see how much of a blessing we had. With this. Now we understand that most we know that we're free. Now we can spend a few dollars. You're saying, which we knew was coming. It has to be done. Has to be an acquiring, a search. Hydro. All of these little things have to come into play.
I, any question?
Probably mainly for Steve. The rubble from the property. Can it go into our dump? Because I know our dump can't take garbage anymore, but you know, garbage, I was all garbage. Is there room out there for brick and wood and stuff like that?
We can look into it like.
Yeah, that, that's for us to look into and check. Because that would be ideal then, that gets rid of it.
Eric, do you have any questions? Doug?
Just one last thought, I'm a second generation Canadian, so I, I have no problem welcoming newer generation Canadians. I think it's a great thing and I like the project, I, I think it's a positive step, so I'm hoping we'll be able to dot some i's and cross some t's and see where we end up.
Yep, I'm fine with this, so. Being over.
Exciting.
Appreciate the information.
Would anybody, can I ask, if anybody would have objections to this?
I think we probably have to talk about it a little bit first.
What, what I would suggest is, is, you know, council a little over and perhaps get back to you with some kind of answer next meeting. It, it's really hard for us to make any kind of decision, you know, when, when there is no concrete plan per se, you know, or like, like a survey, a layout. It would be beautiful to see that from a topographical standpoint, I would say, you know, to be able to see the retunda, you know, design on the lot, you know. I think having that would definitely be beneficial to you in this position, you know.
No, I totally agree with you.
And until that happens, it's really hard to just to say, you know.
I agree with you and I, I just, just wanted to get a feel.
I think, just to cut you off, I think every, every councillor here would agree that there's an issue. We need more housing in this area and not Coburg is landlocked. It's something that we need to look at for sure. Having a stronger plan would be better in this case.
You're right. We'd like to be part of this town. I live in Coburg now. I've been living there, like you said, west, says I did here. But we would like to be part of the town and, and with that, see it move. I totally agree with. Chris saying. Yes. It needs, you need to have. A planning of exactly this.
Definitely, yeah.
But basically, that's a rough idea. Let's say that it would be outside. Now, there's two guys.
One, one thing that I haven't heard yet. When you do come back with some kind of plan. You include more information on your partners. That would be beneficial, I think, as well.
I mean, sure.
I'm here. Yeah, would be great. Because obviously, part of this would be background checking and making sure everything is, is good to go that way, you know.
Oh, I think his background is better than mine.
Really appreciate this though and the push for development here, that's appreciated.
I appreciate everyone. Giving us the opportunity to show what we like to do. I really appreciate that. And I gotta make this special. Quickly on that. He's the one who suggested. Do that, although I brought. So.
Is there anything your partners would like to say or?
When Mike spoke to me about this project, you know, the plan for the land as well before. We spoke to you a few years back. And coming from Toronto, coming into a smaller community, and there's always a need, definitely for housing now. And like you mentioned before. A lot of people from down south that are moving up here. Because a lot of people work from home now, you know, working, you know, all this bigger corporations are saving money on their head offices and stuff like that, so. It's, it's, it's always good, we thought that a lot of people are moving now, moving, building something smaller, I know a lot of builders from down south. So go and tell them, you know what, this is what we have, they're going to jump on it right away. You know, and so we thought might as well, why don't we do it? So we spoke about it and he said, you know, there's a meeting, so I came today just for that. And so we look forward for your blessing, like you said before, and then we will definitely address all these issues Angela had and. You know, and other people, and this way at least, we have a little bit more concrete plan in front of you guys.
That would be, that would be fantastic.
We do have experience in that as well, so that would be very handy.
And your relationship, like how, how do you guys define yourselves? Just friends?
We've been friends for what, six years, seven years.
It would take three years.
And we met. We saw. We met through, through business. With people and that. We were doing business on opposite sides. And then we joined together. Your side. My side. And made it a little bit stronger. And that's why we're. So we don't need for funding. It's our money, if we blow it, we blow it. God willing, it won't happen. But so that's how we.
Can we open for suggestions, like, you know, if you have freeholds, if you think economy is going to be better or something, you know, we open for suggestions that way. Instead of private communities, some that, you know, people want the grass cut, people want this, you know. We have some, I'm from Brampton. We have some communities there where people just, you know, they get out, they see the driver is clean, they, you know, grass has been cut, like in their own personal backyard, you know. So if that's something you guys would recommend or.
Yeah, of course, because allowing. I see so many people. And I give them the job. I give them work. Or they're very chips in. Giving them work. Guys who do landscaping, the same thing.
Very good question here. Um, I would expect that the road, road allowance and everything would be turned over to the town afterwards for our maintenance. Yeah. So we would, we would keep that easement through there.
Thanks for. Yes, that's the thing.
Would this, would the existing sewer get replaced through the property? Because it's pretty old.
Yeah.
And it's very shallow, so that would, that's already included in your price bringing new sewer all the way through the property?
Yes. I know that the. Where, where the pipes went. The actual. Where, where it all goes to.
Yeah.
I know that there's plenty of room there. That, that's a big expense. So that we know that it's all included. We realize and we, and we want to do the piping. Because that piping is at least sixty, seventy, possibly more. So it's probably, some of this cloud, you saw that. So we do that. And when you're digging. What's. You're going to bring piping anywhere. It happens, it doesn't matter how good of a, how brave you are. One time or another, so it might as well just. Feel free to dig it. Move piping, that is that.
I have this question.
Um, just, I don't know whether you're aware, but we've just been hearing in the last. The government now wants our sewer system to be split into runoff and household sewers. So the new sewers going through that property should probably be, you know, doubles, the double system. Because somewhere, yeah, somewhere along the line, we're going to have to dig up the whole town, doing it anyways.
Double piping.
Yeah.
Storm sewer.
Yeah, storm sewer and household sewer are supposed to be, you know, we, we're just hearing that coming down the line now, being called.
That, that kind of. Double piping. Gasoline and gasoline business.
Oh, yeah.
New tanks and double well, piping double well as well.
Oh, okay.
So.
Is that the way we do it?
Yeah, it's called double well.
Okay.
Which makes sense.
Yeah.
Because if one breaks, the alarm goes off and that timer fixes.
Okay, good.
Which makes sense.
Yeah.
The cost is, I don't know. But saves the money.
Learn something every day.
Any other questions?
So I'm glad that the town. I, I appreciate you guys giving us the time. I'm glad that. Makes our project. Is doing work with us. That's, that's a big plus for us.
I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing the next step, what you bring forth, that's, that's what I'm looking for.
Why don't we know that the council say, no, get out of here, we're not interested. At least we didn't get that, so that's, that's a plus, thank you.
Thank you for coming here.
Thank you, gentlemen. You're good?
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Safe drive.
Okay.
I left my bag, I had it all memorized. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Approval amendment of meeting agenda, draft motion be a result that council approved the agenda of the committee of the whole meeting dated January tenth, twenty twenty-three is presented. Oh, sorry, as amended.
Yes, Steve. Going to remove under. Three point one. Training session, council training. As that is being deferred now to decorate the set.
Steve? Can I get a mover on that? Hot, seconded by Harry. All in favor? Harry. Five staff reports, five point one public works, December twenty twenty-two report. Everybody had a chance to read through that? Any questions? Steve may answer on this. Harry?
Through you. What land investigations noted in December the first? Do you have a cost on that?
We have not, this is all any.
And did, if it's investigations to be exhaust all avenues looking through paperwork and stuff like that? Because there's, there were shop drawings for that by land system given to the town.
I would have to speak with.
Any other questions on that? Item five point two animal control, November twenty twenty-two report.
Yes, Steve? As for the animal control for your December twenty twenty-two report will be. Neither, oh, Angela.
Sorry, Marcus, and I do have a question. For the, is it animals first that is paying for when the cats are neutered?
Sorry?
And when, when the dogs and cats are neutered, when people ask for help.
Yes.
That cost is coming from like animals.
So the, what happens is, if you want your cat to be treated or neutered, you pay the fee, animals first does the transport, so they'll transport your cat down to get spare neuter done and then bring your cat or dog back.
Okay. I would say it's a, it's a very reduced fee from what you would pay for the vets up here. Yeah, big reduction, so. For a hundred and fifty, around a hundred and eighty to include the, the shots.
Just to cut you off, I, I wouldn't talk numbers, you know, it is, it is reduced and it's, it's a huge help to the community and well over a hundred animals.
And the ones that are caught in the live traps, like from the colonies. Animals first fundraising and everything pays for those ones all the time. And then they either go to homes if they're suitable or back to the colonies, but not procreating. And we have two more to go. The trap will be over in place.
All right, no further questions on that? Item five point four Coburg Fire Department, twenty twenty-two report. Any comments or questions on that, Steve or worshipers?
Yep. One topic I'd like to just mention to everyone here, it's Project Zero. Our fire department received a hundred and two combinations of urban nocturnal alarms safety project. The public education campaign. So many municipalities here in Ontario. So Embridge was part of this as well. So as our firefighters went home checking. Are or expired, they were distributing these fire alarms.
Awesome. Huge thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. Draft motion be resolved, council accept the staff and committee reports as presented. Doug? Seconded by Gary. All in favor on that? Harry? Six items for council consideration, North Tel managed services contract quote for three and five years. Steve, can you speak on that?
Northern telephone is our IT provider. We had tried previous, uh, other providers to provide this service for us. What they do provide is what we call an on cloud or cloud server. So all of our work daily are backed up. Within this too is also, so if our server goes down tomorrow. Another server in download all the information from the date before, so you're not missing tremendous amounts of data. To run. Municipality. Uh, also is included in this is Cisco Firewall. Here in the news every day of. Individuals going and holding naturally. I mean, use the word hostage, but I've seen it with other companies. They are able to break through firewall and hold your data for a certain amount of time. So they provide that also for us, that firewall and that protection. Let's say offer, uh, maintenance on our desktops up to date, not only for our software licenses, which we use Office three sixty-five. Also for any other, uh, accounting software. So they provide, uh, provide a large scope. Everything that they do is what. Item. We submit an email to, uh, Northern Telephone, they in turn send us a ticket number. If required, they do it remotely, fix the issue, if not the technician. So I've seen other companies try and maintain these services themselves. And with the cost of what you provide per your yearly cost. It would increase dramatically with something severe happens.
So with that, oh, three, go ahead.
Just wondering, which, which term are you recommending?
I'm actually recommending, uh, because inflation right now, as we come across it, I, the five year. I'm looking at. What's considered as best bank for the buck?
Seems to be the best savings, right?
Any comments or questions for council on this?
I'm good with it.
I agree.
Yes, please. All right, following six point two TMSA candidate profiles for TMSA board for the next four years. Josh, in your package, uh, fried by Evan, um, TMSA is looking for council to pick. One representative from each zone. Some of these are easier than others. Gary?
I was looking at these zones, which one is ours? Zone one, yeah.
So zone one is an easy pick. Zone two.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I, I don't know how you can make any decisions. I mean, there's nothing, nothing there, nothing there, not for all these people. I can't, I can't decide. It's like, oh, everybody's involved in this.
One guy, isn't it?
I, I think the decision would be then self, self reflective with what's being provided.
Okay, so those guys are gonna be out of luck, the ones that have plans.
It doesn't look good on.
You're still in five.
So, so let's just go with zone by zone for this, please. Zone one, self explanatory. Zone two. Is everybody, uh, in agreement that Clayton Seymour would be the best representative? Thank you. Zone three, is everybody in agreement that Wayne Miller would be the best representative? Can I get a show of hands for this? Zone four, self explanatory on that one. Zone five, I'll give you a few minutes to read through. How you doing? So what I'll do is I'll read out the names and then we'll, uh, I want to show hands for who you think should be it. Mark Stickel, Metachmon. Apologies if I'm, uh, fudge this name up. Fixit, Dukmar Patel, I'm going with you. Crystal Levy, Nardally. Perfect. Congrats to all those people. Item six point three Cobalt Fire Department, recommendation to add Cliff Cole as a volunteer firefighter. You'll see the communication sent by Casp Bowdoin. Sean Hearn's email asking that council, or sorry, Cliff Cole, as a new member of the Cobalt Fire Department. Steve, can you speak on that?
Actually, it's held a date of this evening, look back on the October twelfth, just prior of the last council's final meeting. So that's why it's bringing forth up to this time here now. Mr. Cole has been attending meetings as well during that duration time, so. Currently, uh, speaking with our chief, we have approximately twenty-five volunteer firefighters. It's always difficult to get volunteer, any volunteers as we learn. Especially with COVID, things have decreased. Uh, it would be ideal to have approximately twenty-three volunteer firefighters. We're always looking for volunteers. For our municipality. So as, uh, our chief brings forth, uh, any members is, he is recommending. I'll bring it forward to council.
So congratulations to Cliff Cole. Thank you for volunteering your time. Item six point four draft by law amendment to, to the procurement policy. Everybody had a chance to read that, your package? Questions? Harry?
Yeah, I'd, um. I'd like to see a procurement procedure for all dollar amounts over three thousand dollars. Is everything being advertised on our website? Sorry, can you repeat the number, sir? The email? Yeah, three thousand. That's just my thoughts anyway. And, uh, everything advertised on our website and Facebook page is minimal. And any amount over ten thousand dollars advertising will lose. Doesn't seem like that has gotten done in the past couple of years. Actually, we advertise everything.
Steve, worship?
Yeah. Uh, this amendment here is until, uh, March seventh, when I'll be applying recommendations to that existing bylaw or creating a new one. Realize how outdated this one here, our current one is from two thousand and five. Health, brought forth. The amounts are currently very low. Bring it up.
Angela?
Um, if we, it would be good to provide us then and find out what the cost of advertising in the newspaper is because if something's ten thousand and it costs us an extra three hundred and fifty. To, to advertise, I, I think it actually should be high, like a very high amount before we pay for advertising. Beyond free. There's a lot of free available.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Yeah, as long as we know the advertising cost upfront, you know, I don't want to see a fifty thousand dollar drug code and it's not available to people in North Bay and wherever else, right?
Who else is good on that?
Okay, so. Here and bring forth changes to council for the updating of the new bylaw.
Yep. Item six point five draft by law municipal line of credit. Any had a little chance to go through that?
It's, sorry.
Is this the bank that we deal with?
Yes, it is. This here is. Staff report is an annual bylaw adopted by council to secure the town.
Any other questions? All right. Item six point six draft by law move forward strategy. Any questions or comments on this?
I would like to see us moving forward.
Number seven items for council information, six point seven, Dr. Scott, notice of accepting new patients at the Latchford Clinic. This is great news. Great news. Any comments on this? Yes, Matt?
Um, perhaps I could go in the one step farther that, uh, I discussed with him. We need to volunteer to, that can help to match up people who don't have transportation because that's their problem. You know, with people that can do transport periodically. Because there's so many people in town and he's really concerned that the rest of Cobalt get first chance at all those spots. And the one thing he is willing to do, if, um, someone phones in and they've got, you know, two or three patients. That they would like to bring down at the same time, you know, people that need his care. He's quite willing to book appointments sort of back to back to back so that one person's bringing them down and they go boom, boom, boom through. And it saves a lot of driving back and forth. And I have done that with people now as well. That, um, it, it means that our people without transport are going to get the care they need. Take the, take all that excess care away from the emergency department. Which, you know, is really rushed off speed. So he's willing to do whatever he can, you know, schedule the appointments to accommodate Cobalters.
Harry, would be any chance of him coming to Cobalt on Fridays when Dr. Sears' office is closed? Making a day here and not having to transport everybody to Latchford, right?
That would be if our doctor was amenable to letting him use his office.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So definitely something we can ask.
Yeah, we can ask him that.
Any questions? Angela?
Um, just to that, um, you may see a pharmacy, they, I think they may have a, a room. I don't know what he needs, but there might be some way. Another location.
And he does make those calls when needed. And he worked through the, the Christmas, New Year's break, sorry.
Here, we've got room in the back of the Fraser room. We're talking about doing the, uh, exercise. Partition that maybe. Have a spare office.
Mind you? Any other comments? Okay. Draft motion be resolved, council accept the items for council consideration and information as presented. Negative mover. Harry? Seconded by Doug? Discussion, we did that. All in favor on this? Harry? Eight unfinished business. Nothing there. Number nine, new business. And there. Ten, closed meeting, draft motion be resolved, council convening closed session as per section two thirty-nine of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended. In order to address a matter pertaining to subsection two B, personal matter about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Can I get a mover? Jim? Seconded by Pat? All in favor? Harry? Thank you, Joey. Thank you, Joey. Okay, we return into open meeting of the. Eleven, business arising from closed meetings. None. Twelve, adjournment, draft motion be resolved that the committee of the whole meeting of council be adjourned at nine thirty-nine.
Yes, please.
Moved by Doug. I get a second or Jim seconds it? All in favor? Harry, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, anybody watching.